To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, loyal nation under God, being truthful with liberty and justice for all.
Barr?
Here.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Here.
Callis?
Here.
Kouser?
Here.
Pitts? Bradshaw?
Here.
Myers? Gaber?
Here.
Willey?
Here.
We have a public hearing. Bob, you want to?
We have a public hearing this evening to review the performance of the Community Development Block Grant Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant that was awarded to Edgers Building Station in the amount of $25,000. The funds were used for a working capital throughout the COVID timeframe. And the purpose of this hearing is to provide an report of the outcomes and provide interested parties opportunity to express their views on the program activities and performance of the grant. We have with us this evening the Edgers. If you'd like to step forward and kind of give a rundown of how things went.
So my name is Becky Edding. As you know, my house is in Iowa, near Edgers Building Station. Jim and I would like to take this opportunity to thank Bob Carl, Stephanie Kennedy, the City Council, and anyone behind the scenes that played a role in helping us secure the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant. The restaurant business has never been easy, but with the pandemic hit in March of 2020, it became nearly impossible. Due to the stay-at-home order, the uncertainty of the time, and concern for our employees and customer safety, we decided to temporarily close, but being closed doesn't pay the bills, and we ended up having to borrow money to pay those bills. When we reopened a couple of months later, we followed all the mandates set forth and have continued to do so to this day. While we have felt that the following of mandates is important, there's no doubt that our business suffered as a result. The grant that you helped us secure allowed us to fill in some of the gaps we experienced due to decreased business. It allowed us to increase some of our employees' wages to make up for lost tips. It allowed us money to help cover monthly expenses. It allowed us some hope in an otherwise bleak time. While the past year has been a dark, dry time that we care to remember each, these difficult times have made us more appreciative of the good. We are eternally grateful to our loyal customers and to the city for being part of this. Thank you.
Any public comments or observations on the performance of the grant? Here's a minute.
Well, I guess we can close the public hearing.
Let me add one thing, that we have, that all of the requirements of the grant have been met. This is the last thing. All distributions have been made, documentation of the expenses have been provided to Springfield, so this is the last phase of the closeout. We have several others still in the hop going through this process.
But we'd like to thank you for your dieted efforts and for keeping your business afloat. It's well appreciated by the entire county.
Thank you.
And your synopsis was excellent.
Thank you.
Gil.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Did Jim write it by the way, Becky? Did Jim write it?
Yeah, he knows.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, let's go to the consent agenda. We have five items on there. If you had a chance to peruse.
I have a motion against the vote. Thinking so.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by John Willie. No discussion. Roll call please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Kouser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willey?
Yes.
Thank you. On the regular agenda, item A, the all-inclusive tour line award. I think Brian's going to give us a good start.
On last Monday, we opened up bids for the LA Heisenberg San Francisco extension. We had four bidders. Your packet should be the bid tab. Optimum Construction was the little bit of the project, and we recommend award contract to Optimum Construction for this one.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Bill Gallop. Roll call please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Kouser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
I'm saying my words right now.
Willey?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Nice.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, you have to always amaze them to be able to discover the difference between the grants.
What do we estimate for this?
I have a rough estimate of about $150,000.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I think he still has the floor, Brian.
Okay. Indiana Avenue. Indiana Avenue is our FAU project that we are proposing to do yet this year. The project is in District Three review right now off the IDOT. As of now, it's still on schedule to be let June 11th of this year, and then after it's awarded, we will start with our pursuit if we can. That project with the FAU dollars are only, FAU covers 80% of the project. We're coming up with a 20%. So we would like to use our rebuild Illinois funds this year for that 20%, and we need to have this resolution passed, which would earmark those dollars for that use. And we have here $300,000. We believe that's more than enough to do that, but we don't want to be so tight that we have to come back in the future, so this should cover that. I think we've had three installments of rebuilt Illinois funds, and they have totaled approximately $390,000, so we are still under the amount that we've been allotted so far.
What else can we use that fund for?
It is just street work.
Okay.
It's got the same requirements as NFT funds.
Have a question.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jerry. Roll call please.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Kouser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willey?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Moving on, contractor license fees. Building and selling department. David's anxious to get up here.
Do you recall at the committee of the whole meeting, we presented the proposal to begin charging an annual fee for contractor registration? We'll see from the test early to this is a common practice. I did reach out to over two dozen municipalities about the average fee to be from $50 to $100. Currently, we do not have a registration fee of $1,000, and the council will approve an annual fee of $50.
Mr. Drew, so we don't have a motion. Motion by Brian, seconded by Jamie. Roll call please.
Callis?
Yes.
Kouser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willey?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Thank you. Good job there. State Department of Purchase, Chris.
Hello. During our budget discussions, I brought the idea of purchasing a semi truck and trailer for our department. As I mentioned then, our can of dump trucks were used for hauling larger loads. When I passed the safety line because the frame was coming apart, it was a used IDOT truck when I bought it. So during the budget process, we evaluated our needs for the department. We thought it would be a good time to look into getting a used truck and a new trailer. It has many benefits for the city. Obviously, it will improve production. We'll be able to move more material with less people. A perfect example of that, as I described before, is when we get rid of the dual shoulders, we have to spend usually a day with two or three trucks hauling rock in, so we're not running to the quarry all the time while we're out on the street working. This will allow us just to use one vehicle, four loads, five loads, and we're done for the day. Be able to utilize it for snow removals downtown and for a whole host of other activities. We're doing a lot of our home demonstrations in-house, so it's going to allow us to not have the higher size to help us haul. Finding ones was a whole different ballgame. Usually when we found the nice one, by the time they called on it, it was already sold. Made a couple of fairly long periods to realize that the trucks pictured were not in good shape. But we did find one in Morris at Newark Truck and Farm. It's a 2,000 kilo freight miner. And the asking price with the title and everything is $24,015. When we looked for a trailer, we opted to go with a new trailer, just because of the variety of materials that we will haul from concrete to rock to sand, all that and dirt. We decided to go with a heavy duty steel trailer. And we figured we might as well start something fresh versus something that's already half worn out. In looking for those, we decided to go with the Vibrolite trailer, their built-in streeter. And that comes complete with tars and everything, and the cost for that will be $39,250. So we're asking permission to purchase the truck from Newark Truck and Farm and the trailer from LAC welding streeter for a total cost of $63,363.
That's well within the budget.
That's out of budget.
I thought we might have left.
It's got $326,000. We were finding that vintage, there were some were all over 400. We're not going to put near the miles on it, you know, these guys. Tony and Bill, Tony's shoulder mechanic, and Bill's my assistant, they drove up there and looked at it, they spent over an hour with it, and when I called the guy that's telling we're interested in it, he says, "I've never had anybody go through a truck like those two guys did." So they really, really looked it over, and it's got good tires. It's in very good shape. It was a fleet truck that came out of Iowa.
What's that, what's that trailer hold?
I think it's 50,000 pound rating, I think. 50,000 pound axles, 225s. 23 footer.
But then if you would feed that, is it double the size of the under the rest?
Well, our canum is, you know, figure, you can get 22 tons semi, where we're looking at 14 on a canum. Yeah, I figured it'll be about 2:1.
Will we turn motion again?
Second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brian. Purchase the semi. Roll call please.
Kouser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willey?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
And while you're out there, Chris, let's talk about some roofs.
Yes, another budgeted item that we had this year was scheduled roof replacements on the Route 66 museum and as well as the final roof on the Hope Town Museum. We saw prices from the two contractors we've been working with over the past couple of years. For the Pontiac Museum, River City Roofing out of Chori area was $15,900. Union Roofing from Chanel was $22,300. And for the Route 66 building, River City was $30,360, and Union Roofing was $25,200. So we're recommending to approve a contract with River City for the Pontiac Museum at $15,900, and a contract with Union Roofing for $25,200 to do the Route 66 museum.
The type of roof where they're replacing?
They're the rubber membrane.
And that's what you're putting back on?
Yes.
That's all our leaky parts, please?
Sure. Long overdue for that building, for sure.
What should we budget?
I think we had $25,000 a piece, or 30, 25, yeah, 25 a piece, I believe.
This is tip funding.
Right.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by?
I'd second Mike Barr. I think those prices are incredible. I just put a roof on my house of $18,200. It's amazing that those prices, I actually recall these guys. Mike, I had a best request of a blue car for a while.
Motion is seconded. Roll call please.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willey?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Kouser?
Yes.
Real quick before we move on from that, since we say a little bit more here, those audience are just, Chris is working for, okay. We're just saying a little bit more here, and plus this tip maybe you're throwing up in there.
We should have something for that.
Pardon me. Wait, you were. Exactly. All right, moving on.
Yes, in your. Community Development.
But we can go back.
Okay, you want the traffic to move up?
No, go this way. Community Development Committee, Bill, do you want to give us an update on?
I think it was in the back room, we heard about it. We met last week, Beechers was there, they were presenting, and maybe come up with a truck. Be right, Gaber and Kouser. And of course, there's no license towards the way you have to discuss it.
Yeah. As mentioned in the minutes, we have the hustlers license and the attendant merchant license. The attendant merchant license is like the tree ripe fruit post, come to town, and that is a $100 registration fee and $25 a fee additional. For someone that's going to be on a regular basis, felt that was kind of steep, and so started looking at what would be the elements of an ordinance that would regulate food trucks. Right now, it's folks come in, they're gone without even knowing about it. Really, that's something that we want to get a handle on. Since then, I did find some additional information from American Plate Association that is included in the minutes. But the committee also talked about that fine balance of providing a unique experience with the food trucks, whether dieting or ice cream or any other sorts of things. But at the same time, making sure that the brick and mortar restaurants don't take a hit. John Elton, we talked about that, you know, a lot of them have just come through the COVID thing and are really back on their feet. As we looked at other ordinances from other communities, that was a constant threat, saying that they had to be so far away from other brick and mortars. So as the committee summarized, the seven things that they thought should be minimum in an ordinance, that of course would be health department licenses, annual registration fee, private business, if they're invited onto a private business in a commercial zone area, you know, that the committee seemed to think would be okay. Participate in city-sponsored events, participate in other community events with the permission of the sponsors. And then when we get to on-street, they would have to provide at least 24 hours notice where they're going to be set up, the times they're going to set up, and we'd want to look at the compatibility of traffic, safety, and impact on other brick and mortars. And then also having adequate insurance. We did talk to the Beechers today, and the rush is kind of off. If they place their order tomorrow, it wouldn't be done yet this year, but they would really hope that we would continue processing this so that they would know where they stand. So.
Well, we may have others come forward before this is done still yet this year.
And we have some that show up unannounced, and so I think it's something that other communities are going through now because of the popularity of it, and want to make sure that it's done in a properly manner, and give some opportunity for public input as well. There's something else we probably should have added to that too, Bob. They should have to notify the public health department when they're coming, because they can buy that for next of the year, or for season, or for event, and then if they don't notify them if they're coming, anyone can change people on that truck without the health department's knowledge, so you don't know what kind of food could be handed to you or who's handing it to you. So complying with the health, they need that, so the health department can check the alignment. If you know I actually needed, if there's any other input that you'd like to provide for, start working with Alan on putting the framework of ordinance together, that's coming back. Another component was, we talked about this at the budget process, of restructuring our rent subsidy program, kind of backing off on the subsidies to 50% of the rent for the first quarter, 25% for the second quarter. And requirement of the subsidies would be the development of a business plan that would be presented and reviewed by the community development. So we'll be drafting that in one's, just so that that's in the works.
Farm by the rest, in other words. Right? Very good. Let's move on to the traffic.
Do you want to give the much on about?
Chief?
Pardon?
No, we're not, wait there. When we get some documentation, we'll bring it back. In your packet, it was cut into the high points of the renewal with the Department of Transportation for maintenance of streetlights. All of our streetlights in town are on state roads, and we share in the maintenance of those based upon the number of stops in our, at the state road. So it varies between 75% and 50%. And we do this every five years, and our five years is up, and the department has requested to renew that in the same percentages that it did in the past.
So. So move by Brian, seconded by Jerry.
Good question. Can we deal with it and not make the deal?
You don't play, let's make the deal with the guy that handles a lot of the cars.
What's that? Will you let us adjust them?
Huh?
Will you let us adjust them?
No. Oh. These are traffic.
I know.
Pardon? Jerry. No, no discussion. Roll call please.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willey?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Kouser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Moving on to golf cart assignment of.
Right, as we were processing the purchase of the Alps property, one of the things that we discussed was they have an existing five-year lease for their golf carts, and we talked about us taking the assignment on that, and need for our, to make that transfer, something in the ministry, but the council hasn't approved that.
Cart's been running course, so, yeah, good idea. Maybe get a fair rate. Motion by Bill, seconded by Kurt. Roll call please.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willey?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Kouser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Moving on, Eric comments. We have 48 pages out here, but I'm going to whittle it down a little bit. We, first of all, I'd like to tell you that shortly after our May meetings, we will re-evaluate and redo our scanning committees with the grant head. New council amendment of the elected people and so on and on. But at this point, I'd like to say that we're going to be listing a value member of the council in the area. I'd like to thank you for all the efforts and work. You've been a solid supporter of the community and will continue to be, and I just wanted to let you know that your name is on the list. So I plan on using you more again, so anything you'd like to say, pardon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something about this council. I just think what a great group of people. I mean, everything is always purpose-led towards making a better community, and that's just why I go, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being. Thanks for your service, Jerry. We appreciate it, and look forward to your endeavors in the future to put something in front of them. Also, I believe that we have Jason Lee here, and Jason, as you may know, is a management independent in the third ward, and will be coming out to the council. Jason, you might just hand up and say bye.
Let's see, now we have some more pizza.
Actually, I think we're going to go to speak.
Oh, okay.
Other than that, well, we have other things to get into. City Council comments?
I have some exciting news to share. I came in earlier last week to visit with Bob about the fireworks show because wasn't sure if it was going to be permitted this year. I came in earlier last week to visit with Bob about the fireworks show because wasn't sure if it was going to be permitted this year due to COVID. And he assured me that everything can be on his plan. And as you know, Deals has primarily hosted and largely funded the show for many years. And so, the organization would like to find a way to raise additional funds for the show that we have already contracted for this year. And so, we are going to do a fireworks, um, event every Wednesday night for the next eight weeks. We have, we've been running a drive-through for a year. And so, a portion of our food sales every Wednesday night and a portion of our 50/50 for the next eight weeks is going to go into a fund to add to our show. And Bob agreed that the city would match whatever we raised to add to the show. Our fireworks contractor has to know by June 1st what we're going to add because they have to prep the show. But we invite anyone who would like to come and have dinner on us, with us on Wednesday nights, through the drive-through or dine-in to help us raise our money for a bangout fireworks show. So, we're going to have to get some marketing out. It will start this week.
At what times?
The drive-through runs from 5:00 to 6:30. It's an all-volunteer crew and we, um, we pretty much run it through as fast as we can. And inside dining is from 5:00 till 7:30. It's a little longer inside.
And this year, are we July 1st?
July 5th is the show. That was arranged last year when we had it canceled. The fireworks contractor cannot come and do a show here on July 4th, they are too busy.
It's on July 5th?
That's a Monday.
We, uh, two years ago, we were forced to change the date, and it worked so well.
More people came, yeah.
We decided to go for it, but everybody else...
Because Willie drove into a special event.
And Monday will be the official holiday for many people.
Right.
And this, the dining starts like day after tomorrow, Wednesday?
Wednesday night, and this week, we run a drive-through special every week, one deal. This week, we're doing our tenderloins, which is our most popular thing. The meals are 10 bucks, tenderloin and a side and desserts. Inside dining, there's two other menu options that you have every week, but through the drive-through, it's just easier. We have a text service that we have people text their orders in to us and tell us what time they're picking up. And, I mean, it really runs very smoothly for anybody who's, I mean, Bill, Bill knows, he comes by every week.
No, it's not the places that they're...
Yeah. You never see me because I'm back tracking deals, but, um, it's fun night for us.
Yeah, it's usually very, very good.
Yeah, Bill was a friend of mine, too.
Does that mean sometimes it's not very good? I had one, it wasn't very good. It happens, yeah.
Before this is over, this, off subject again, I forgot to mention that the department of this town are just amazing. Just wanted to, I didn't want to bump into that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? If not, city administration.
I don't have any today.
Why don't you mark that down? Public comments? Jason, you're the only public writer. We do have need of executive session, so, I think we have to move on. So, it's executive session.